Please silence all your cell phones and electronic devices. If you would, please stand for the prayer by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Angerson, and our pledge by Councilman George of Ward 1. And also, before we pray, please keep one of our citizens who regularly attend our meetings that had underwent some surgery yesterday, please keep them and their family and your thoughts and prayers.
Father God, we bow before you tonight. We give you our, we give you praise, Lord. We thank you for your presence here in this meeting tonight, God. We ask that you keep your guiding hand on this city, Father. Just be with all the leaders, Father, the employees, God, all the citizens of this city, God. Just keep your hedge of protection around us, Father. We thank you most of all for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice for our sins on Cowbridge Cross. And we ask all of us in his name. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman George, and thank you, Mr. Angerson. And just to let the clerk know for the record for the minute, Councilman Jackson is on the line. Unfortunately, he's not able to attend in person because he is actually working and supporting our youth at their homecoming dance. He is their DJ this evening, so he is on the phone to participate, but he is also working this evening. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any additions or changes, Ms. Hancy? Do we have a motion by council to approve the agenda order approval?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to announcements by Ms. Hancy.
Outdoor movie night featuring 10 age mutant ninja turtles, Mutant Mayhem will be October 25th, starting at 5:30, uh, 6:30 PM at the City of Goche Sportsplex. Goche Mullet and Music Festival will be October 19th, Thursday, from 9 until 6 at the former mall property. And the Taste of Thursday will be October 24th, starting at 11 AM at the former mall property.
Thank you, Ms. Hancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda. This evening, we have with us Mr. Eric Byer, one of our local Goche citizens and chairman of the Wounded Warrior Project, which is a fishing tournament. Mr. Bauer, if you'll come to the front.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Good to be back here again. Just want to give you a quick update on where we are and thank the city again for willing to support and sponsor this event, the Wounded Warrior Project event. This is our, gonna be our fourth, fifth year hosting here in the city of Goche, so we really want to, from, from our president, Wounded Warrior Project, of course, myself, the president of the Gulf Coast Chapter, Wounded Warrior Project, want to thank you all for your, for your continued support. This year, that will be held on the 25th and 26th. The 25th will be the meeting greet, where we will have just the service members that are coming. Now, we have, we added another state that want to come here, and so we have 10 of our service members that are coming from other neighborhoods, Tennessee. So we're gonna, you know, ask the city to give them a warm welcome when they come, come to visit our great city. So the meeting greet will start at 5 o'clock on Friday, the 25th, and go to 8 o'clock, and we're asking the city, Mr. Mayor, to come out and do the welcome for us and greet some of your service members along the Gulf Coast. Since our last visit here, we've added 10 new service members who were recently retired or got injured from our militaries, from our military service that are relocated here to the Gulf Coast region, which is actually the residence in the city of Goche. The next date will be the 26th, when we will actually do the actual event. Again, we're asking the city and city councilmen to come out and support, support this event that, that morning. But we have local guys that are volunteering at times and their equipment to take these guys out on the day of fishing, to give them some water therapy, as you would call it, and then get them out of the hospital, of course, and give them some of our great water therapy that we have in the city of Goche. So that being said, Mr. Mayor, we also are asking, we have a long time, Wounded Warrior has been coming to the city helping us emcee this thing and host it for it. Mr. John Hicks is out of Fort Worth, Texas. We're asking the city if we will present him with a key to the city, because he does come back throughout the year to help us with mental health counseling and to bring that to, to this attention. This year, we're focusing on mental health, mental health only, along with the single river health services, Gulf Coast behavioral health as well. So we're asking the city to present this to John Hicks with a key to the city, because he comes back and he helps us out throughout the year outside of doing the fishing tournament. And he loves coming here and he stands by buying some property here if we can get, as far as, kind of help him out, buy some property. So that being said, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have with an update on opening courses at this time.
Well, Eric, I just want to thank you and all the volunteers. You know, we're blessed to have you all. We're blessed to have a wonderful veterans community here, and the event, myself, Councilman College, fellow council members have attended it, and it's been a great event, and the partnership with you all, with our police and fire, has always been supportive of your project, and I can assure you, whatever we can do to assist you and your team, just like Pascagoula and Jackson County assist you also, along with DMR and all the other state and federal agencies. It's a great partnership. It'll be a wonderful weekend at Indian Point, and we look forward to meeting them, and Mr. John Hicks is very deserving for all he puts in of any recognition, so we will be glad to see and greet him as usual at the Wounded Warrior event.
We did add a one event, which is next weekend during the Mullet Festival. We have our gold star kids. These are all children who are foster parents doing one of the conflicts, and we're teaching them both in water safety. Wounded Warrior Project is gonna host that event, so that's Saturday from 8 to 10, so if you want to come out and meet some of these great kids, we'd be, you know, great to come out and meet them.
At the Mullet Festival?
At the, yeah. Well, we're gonna do that at Indian Point, and then we're gonna bring them to the Mullet Festival.
Okay.
How many Wounded Warriors are there?
This year, we got 40.
Forty?
We got 40.
Wow.
So that's 40 boats, and then we have a few boats, you know, one for the media, and then, of course, you know, take the mayor out to let him see, of course, so we have 40 Wounded Warriors.
Don't throw them overboard.
No, we won't. So, and keep in mind, these are all warriors.
You can't swim.
This year, we have five that are in wheelchairs, some of injuries that you can see, some you can't see, so we've rigged up some boats with these guys that are in wheelchairs.
Oh, wow.
And then, of course, we'll take them out in the shrimp boat with Gray Baker and this damn Kenny B that evening, so we have 10 that want to do that with.
And they always have fun.
And they have a great time.
It is just great. If you've not been to the Wounded Warrior Project event, I encourage you to show up, because seeing the life on their face and their experience and hearing their stories is just rewarding, and you will be blessed, I can assure you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we thank all the volunteers, all the boat owners that participate. It's a great project and a great cause.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That brings us to our business agenda. Item number one, resolution authorizing the issuance of combined utility system revenue bonds, Series 2024, and the total amount not to exceed $5,300,000 to finance the city's water and sewer system improvements and other related purposes, Ms. Hancy.
Yes, sir. This is the second step in issuing the bonds. Y'all all aware of what they're going for. Pittman is here. If you have any questions, I believe the bids will be open the fifth of November, March, or November meeting. And so this is kind of your next step, then it'll be the bids. Open November 5th.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hancy. That brings us to any public comments on business agenda item number one? Any public comments? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of the combined utility system revenue bond, Series 2024, and the total amount not to exceed $5,300,000 to finance the city's water and sewer system improvements? The funds will be allocated towards acquiring, constructing, and enhancing the city's water and sewer system, establishing a debt service reserve fund, and covering the issuance costs associated with the bonds.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No discussions.
Councilman Gilat?
No comments.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to thank our city manager and our, we have our finance guy here with government consultant, Steve Pittman. We thank you for coming down this evening if we have any questions. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, approve renewal of cybersecurity agreement with Coalition by Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
This is just a renewal of the liability insurance for our cybersecurity, which includes fishing, ball, cyber extortion, that type of thing. This club was late in coming, so I was hoping you'd notice.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve the renewal of the cybersecurity agreement with Coalition?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We got a motion by Councilman Gilat, second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, consideration for a property owner-initiated rezoning of property from a R1 low density, single-family residential to MRT2 mixed-use recreation commercial to located on John Daly Drive, GPC number 24-37-RZ, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Angerson.
Thank you, Mayor. This request was received from Sioux Value Landing LLC. The rezoning property located on John Daly Drive. The application fee of $300 was paid on August 9, 2024, and all public municipal requirements were met. Some background history on this property, the existing RV park is located on parcel number 82425010.100. The majority of the park is also a second parcel, which the entryway and roadway cut through to get to this parcel, which is parcel ID number 82424080.20. The actual property now is the zone R1. We're requesting this council consider to rezone it to MRT2, which actually the existing use was fit in the MRT2 district. After hearing this, planning commission recommends the city council approve the rezoning based on an error in the rezoning and that the original RV park lies partially on the new zone property. And the city council may approve the rezon to the subject, of the subject area to the MRT2 mixed-use recreational commercial or deny the rezoning. I've included events from the meeting in the packet. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Angerson. That brings us to any public comments? Any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council to approve the, accept and approve the planning commission's recommendation for a property owner-initiated rezoning of property from a R1 low density, single-family residential to a MRT2 mixed-use recreation commercial 2 located on John Daly Road, GPC number 24-37-RZ, PID number 82425010.100 and 82424080.200.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I do have one question as far as advertising notice for this. Did we send letters to the 20 property owners, or is it advertised in there? And to what extent? I'm just curious of, I understand the premise behind this property and all that stuff. I'm just concerned about the residents on Route Gentilly. If they go to clear that property, what kind of pushback we may get from that?
Well, all the notice requirements by law were met. I'd have to look into ordinance to see if it's, if it was necessary to send out in so many feet, or if it's just adjacent properties, but whatever the ordinance calls for, we can have. And then we also post the property itself, and then we also post it in the law.
I don't think there's any homeowners adjacent, other than the ones across the valley, but I'm not sure if you can call them adjacent.
Yeah, it's not really adjacent. That's all I'm just, there's, Route Gentilly is just to the north of there, and if they clear all that trees right there, I mean, granted, if it's a MRT2 and the use is already there, I just don't want to get any pushback from them not being notified.
There were once some questions from a couple of them over there, and that was about the clearing, and we just need to keep an eye on it and make sure they keep the silt barriers up properly, because there's gonna be some erosion if they don't.
The applicant expressed at the planning commission meeting that he doesn't intend to clear any closer to the water than what he has cleared now, so he intends on leaving the buffer.
Okay, very good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
No comments.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilman George? We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman Elvin. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, thank you, Councilman Jackson. Motion carries. We thank, I don't, we want to thank Sioux Value for investing, negotiating, and continuing all the improvements up there, because it is a great amenity to not only the neighborhood, but also Goche, Mississippi. That brings us to business agenda item number four, consider a request for a four-foot variance to fence height requirements along the side property line and a front yard and a two-foot variance to fence height requirements along the front property line in a R1 low density, single-family residential located at 6208 Old Spanish Trail, GPC number 24-38-VAR, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Angerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Anthony Underlee Sprague for a four-foot variance to fence height requirements along the side property line and the front yard and a two-foot variance to fence height requirements along the front property line in an R1 district. The application fee of $175 was paid on August 16, 2024, and all public municipal requirements were met. Some background on this property, the applicant would like to install an eight-foot weather privacy fence along the side property lines of the front lawn to keep vehicle lights from shining in the windows. And the maximum height allowed for a fence in the designated front yard is four foot, therefore, they're asking for a four-foot variance to this height requirement. They would also like to install a six-foot decorative fence with gates along the front property line to prevent public TLA high school students from using their circular driveway to make U-turns. Fences shall not exceed four foot in height within the designated front yard, so there will be a two-foot variance to fence height requirements for this portion. I've included the definition of hardship in the packet through review and the criteria for approval, as called out in 4.18.4, and reviewed by the ordinance. I'm hearing this request. Planning commission recommends the city council approve the four-foot variance on the side and the two-foot variance on the front, so that the evidence presented meets all criteria for approval in our ordinance. So the city council may approve the variance as presented, approve the variance, request for changes, or deny the variance. Again, you have the minutes in the packet, and the applicant will also hear your comments and your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Angerson. Any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve a four-foot variance to fence height requirements along the side property line and front yard and a two-foot variance to the fence height requirements along the front property line in a R1 low density, single-family residential located at 6208 Old Spanish Trail, GPC number 24-38-VAR, PID 8243209, 32029.000.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
I got a question. When I'm riding down Old Spanish Trail and I see a strip of land cleared with clay dirt on it, is that where this subdivision entrance is going to be?
Yes, sir.
And in here, you say 100 homes. There's not enough property there to put a home. Are they going further behind a school back in there and building homes?
It connects to the Elliot Homes subdivision.
Yeah, Elliot Homes.
Off of Highway 57. So the property that goes in the back behind the school where Elliot has two.
So they're making an entrance up on Old Spanish Trail.
Correct. So you're gonna have.
Is all of Elliot Homes?
Can you stand up and state your person last name and address for the record for the clerk? Sorry.
Underlee Sprague, 6208 Old Spanish Trail.
Y'all in the blue house with the circular driveway?
Yes, sir.
Which is a beautiful home.
Thank you.
Now, is Elliot Homes subdivision gonna be on city property?
No, it's in Jackson County.
Because the city line is over here, but they're absolutely, across the street, they're in the city.
Yes, sir. They're in the city, and that subdivision is.
And across the street is county. That's what I was, and every time I pass that, I say, my God, what are they putting down in there? Now I know. Elliot Homes. Wow. Okay. I don't have any other comments. I can understand why you're.
Yeah, wow, for us too, by the way. We should not get a notification about that subdivision. I believe that Jackson County web mapping is misleading. The property line, the way it, and though it's an estimate on that web mapping, it doesn't show it connecting to our property in front, but it actually does. So I drew on that little diagram for this, that that line is completely wrong, and that property does, if you cross the street, intersect into the portion of our property across the street.
Well, the guy to the west of y'all has built a home there, right?
Yes, there's a brand new one that was just built.
And he's gonna be?
Directly across from. But they built their house, this is my expression here, in our backyard, basically.
I saw that.
Several yards, and then they're in the back. So the fence is multiple purposes, because in fact, since now that we had a beautiful backyard with forest, we now have lights, like, all the time in the backyard.
It's unfortunate that you have to build a, what I would call a force around your house to eliminate lights and traffic through the driveway. That's awful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilman George? We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank y'all for coming to and your investment in Goche. That brings us to business agenda item number five, consider a request for a four-foot variance to sign height requirements and a 174 square foot variance to sign square footage requirements in a C3 highway commercial located at 2012 Highway 90, GPC number 24-39-VAR, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Angerson.
Thank you, Mayor. This request was received from Goche Commerce Center, LLC, for a four-foot variance to sign height requirements and a 174 square foot variance to sign square footage requirements in the C3 commercial district. The application fee of $175 was paid on September 16, 2024. All public municipal requirements were met. As you read through the background paragraph, you'll see a lot of numbers there that calculates the actual variance, what the existing sign is, what they're adding. But to simplify this, they have an existing sign. The applicant wanted to add on to the sign because he had more businesses in there than he has signs. The sign now is legal, non-conforming, so it doesn't conform to the ordinance, but it is legal because it's grandfathered. In order for him to add to this sign, he'd want to bring the sign into compliance, and the only way to do that would be for y'all to dispute the service, other than him tearing it down and rebuilding the sign smaller and making all the slots smaller. So by giving this variance, these two variances, one to height, because the sign is taller than what's allowed now, and the sign is larger than what's allowed, issuing these variances would make him compliant with the variance. So that's just to summarize the situation. Of course, if you have any questions about the sizes, you have an answer. I've included the definition of hardship through review and the criteria for approval for the variance. And planning commission hearing this, planning commission recommends the city council approve the variance as presented. The council may approve the variance, approve the changes, or deny it. And I've included the minutes for your review, and the applicant will also hear them.
Thank you, Mr. Angerson. Any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation for the request for a four-foot variance to sign height requirement and a 174 square foot variance to sign square footage requirements in a C3 highway commercial located at 2012 Highway 90, GPC number 24-39-VAR?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Just one comment. I noticed one of our, the planning commissioners are sitting in the back right there, and I want to thank him and his commission for their due diligence on these cases as they come before us.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George? We have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I mean, Councilman Gilat, I'm sorry, made the motion, and George, second. You got it.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Thank you, Mr. Pilcher. We appreciate y'all's investment here in Goche, and also echo Councilman College. We appreciate our planning commissioners, and especially the one here this evening, Mr. Joshua.
Yeah, and gentlemen, I want to thank you too, and like, also, get the attention of the Pilcher family. It's a pretty good-sized investment in Goche. We've got Jason Pilcher, Hamed. We've got Pilcher Title Company, and now we have the Negotiate Commerce Center, and we love it here, and thank you all. We hope to take it.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Pilcher. That brings us to business agenda item number six, approval of the docket of claims. Our city clerk presented them online, and they were available for the council to review and the citizens.
She's asking, did you vote on the last matter?
Yeah, we did.
Did we? Yeah, I don't think we voted.
We had a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman George. All in favor? I thought Councilman Jackson said, yeah, ah, I thought. Business agenda item number six, approval of the docket of claims. Ms. Montgomery, our city clerk, has provided unto everybody, the citizens and the council to review. Any public comments on business agenda item number six? None? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion, approve the docket of claims, provided that all entries are of the true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman George?
No comment.
We got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elvin. All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They'll be approved in one motion unless a council member wants to pull one. Does anybody want to pull one?
Number five.
Number five is being pulled. Do we have a motion to approve 1 through 4 and 6 through 8?
You're gonna raid them all?
That's approval of the minutes from regular council meeting held October 1, 2024. twenty four, two received September twenty twenty four, privilege license report, three received July twenty twenty four, finance reports, four approval of a business service agreement renewal with Sparklight for the city of Gochee's maintenance garage, six approval of a memorandum of understanding with Jackson County Emergency Communication District, seven authorization to enter into a contract agreement with Pyro Show, eight resolution directing the placement of liens on properties located in Gochee, Mississippi for fees and charges incurred by the city of Gochee to abate the unsafe conditions that vacant structures pursuant to the Mississippi Code, section twenty one dash nineteen dash eleven. Do we have a motion to approve one through four, six through eight?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, shall we have a second? By Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Councilman Jackson, motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number five.
I'd like to have an explanation of what this supplemental agreement is doing.
Well, let's read it and then follow it. Approval of a supplemental agreement, number one, to the construction, engineering and inspection contract with Michael Baker International for the Martin Bluff roadway improvement project, STP ninety one ninety four dash zero 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 one LPA, one zero five zero six nine dash eight zero one zero 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 by Ms. Yancey, because it's the type I missed in it, it's no longer here.
So basically, this is for additional engineering and inspection services due to the construction getting prolonged and so therefore the inspection services took longer. And when they approached me with this, I told them that we do not have the money for it and they got the money from GRPC, am I correct? And so that's how this ended up, because it's exceeded the days and so it's requiring more longer inspections and longer whatever to finish it.
Because of the extension of the construction.
Because the construction's taking longer so the RBRs took longer.
You just said something about we didn't have the money?
In other words.
What?
There wasn't even grant funds left to fund this and GRPC agreed to fund it.
So Gulf Regional Planning Commission is going to fund this engineering extension of inspection. Okay. Satisfied by? I make a motion, we approve of supplemental agreement, number one, the construction, engineering, inspection contract with Mike, Michael Baker International for the Martin Bluff roadway improvement project.
Got a motion by Councilman Galot and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Galot?
No comments.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. First up is citizen comments and we have one this evening, Mr. Charles Moore.
My name is Charles Moore, I live in the next week's West Coast, Gochee, Mississippi. I'm still asking Russ to step down for the company to make about after mail by calling the N word. He said he didn't say it, he didn't put on Facebook, so we ask him to make a report to the police department, they didn't get it. So we're still asking him to step down if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. No other comments. That brings us to our council comments. It's the second meeting of the month, so we'll start with Councilman Alvin.
Just want to thank our employees again for the work they do to make our city work.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes, on the Martin Bluff road today, it being such a beautiful day, it was only four construction workers working and two surveyors on the road today. Is there any particular reason with much going on?
I know they've been working.
If you would state for the record, state your first and last name and who you're with.
I'm with Michael Baker International. They've been working a lot on getting the rock down. We've had some delay in that they went out and tested the rock recently, didn't pass density, so they've had to kind of pull some of it through the back. We're doing some tests on there to get that back up, so I'm assuming that's why there wasn't a full crew out there today, but I know that they are working diligently on getting that pass, getting those test pass, so we can move on to the paving for this project.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I got.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Galot?
I would like to congratulate Ms. Chastity Bilbo, Ms. Rachel Honing, for the opportunity they had cruising the coast, what we done out there on a Sunday. That was unbelievable and it was more cars than I have ever seen there and I think it's getting bigger and bigger every year. Congratulations.
That's all, Councilman Galot? Okay. Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, that was a great job done, well done job at cruising the coast and I have no further comment.
Okay. Councilman George? I just want to say, what a great day it is to be in Gochee, Mississippi. But just like all these, and I thank Kim Soche because when Mayor Vine comes into the city all day to sign something, it's like a box full of chocolates when you get in the city of Gochee. You never know what you're going to get and it's an honor and a privilege to serve as the mayor for this beautiful city. I can tell you, Gochee is blooming. If you came in to Gochee from the north, from the east or from the west, it is blooming. I thank RBI for their maintenance of our flower beds because they now have lipstick on them and that is attractive, so we want to thank them. It's been a long time coming. Next, I want to thank our echo Councilman Galot, you know, with the recreation department, Chastity Bilbo, our recreation director, our city manager, Woody Bailey, all of the staff that volunteered, every department was out there Sunday, the band, the movie. It just was a great day for our cruise in the coast event. We had record attendance. You just had to be there. If you were not there, you missed a great day. So thank you all. The chairman, Woody Bailey, was pleased with our event. It was just nice. Secondly, you missed me and Val, our custodian, dancing the afternoon away, so we had a great time. To Val Stanton, we have, how many of y'all know how many custodians Gochee, Mississippi has? I see one finger, I see another one finger. Anybody that knows besides that? Well, that's right. We only have one. But last, a few weeks, week before last, it was Custodian Day and I did not honor her the day before that at the board meeting and I apologize, but happy National Custodian Day to our one and this whole city custodian and she does a fine job. That's Ms. Val Stanton. Secondly, this month, how many knows what this month is?
October.
October, but what do we recognize in October?
My son's birthday on October twenty sixth.
Breast cancer awareness. Kudos. So we do have a breast cancer survivor, at least one here in this meeting tonight. We have another city employee that is a survivor, but happy National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and thank all of our medical people for all their hard work. Lastly, there was also another event in the city of Gochee that we partner with and we provide things for public safety and that's Family Day in the Park at Fraser Park. That was this past Saturday. Kudos to the staff, kudos to Waste Pro back there, David Alston with Waste Pro. They provided some portalets that is outside of their contract. They provided some disposable trash receptacles with bags, so the litter was not that bad. Chastity Recreation Department had it looking pristine and H two O Innovations, they made sure the right of way maintenance was there so it could be parked on easily, walk through your, through the ditch to get into the park if you came from different areas. It just looked really nice down there and everybody had a great day and kudos to all of you. Also, I want to give kudos to our police and fire department. They have been busy giving escorts out to our high school. If you've not paid attention to the high school social media or the city, they are on the move. Gochee High School from anywhere, from the girls lady volleyball team made history. They made the round two of the playoff. They got send offs to both Florence and there. Also, the track meet, they're participating today in a state playoff in Jackson. The band got one some of their competition. So many of our youth organizations are succeeding, our Pee Wee including, and we just ask that you really promote and support them. I also want to remind you that it is homecoming week, so we want to remind everybody to have clean homecoming fun because we have to prove people wrong and we can have a good time and fun in the city of Gochee without having negative publicity in our city. I have faith in all of our youth and our citizens. I have faith in our staff that they will continue to work with those organizations like Ms. Yancey, Ms. Bilbo has, the police chief in his department. We will continue to move Gochee forward in a positive light and thank you all for your hard work and dedication. Go Gators. I hope we win Friday night. I ask you to come out and support the Gochee Gators because it will be a great day. Then the following day, Saturday, as you already heard, it's Mullet Fest. Please come out and support the Mullet Festival. The volunteers have put a lot of energy, time and effort into the organization and I cannot thank them enough. With that being said, I don't have any further comments. Ms. Yancey? Oh, I do have one more comment. The last comment, I need to ask the board to approve a resolution that we allow the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to use for the Jackson County Blue Ribbon Fair, our wooden community stage. Can I get a motion from council to approve that?
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman Galot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion? Starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Galot?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
We, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's been a pleasure working with them. Also, don't forget to go support our fair that will start Sunday and the stage will be used for the entertainment out there, so their staff has been a pleasure to work with. Brings us to our city manager comments. Ms. Yancey? No. City clerk, Ms. Montgomery?
No.
City attorney, Mr. Dentos?
Yes, sir.
I also want to thank our Mississippi Municipal League. I would be remiss, me and Councilman College attended the municipal league conference, small town conference last week in Vicksburg and it was very educational, great fellowship with our fellow state leaders and our lieutenant governor was there and gave a great update to all of us in attendance. Do we have a motion to recess until October the twenty second, twenty twenty four at eleven thirty AM?
So moved.
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman Galot, a second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.